Welcome. I cannot say with any less enthusiasm how happy I am to look out and see many of you. So, thank you and thank you to everyone who's moving in. And thank you to Elena and John, our technical wizards. We're doing something that many wizards have not attempted to do. So, I appreciate your patience. I would like to have a motion and a second to leave executive session and go into the public meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. So, I officially call the meeting to order. I would like to invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we near the end of the year and celebrations are the theme, I'd love to turn it over to Agenda Item Number Three, our tenure appointments.
So, I'll start. Welcome back, everybody. It's great to see everybody. We have some wonderful teachers that are receiving tenure tonight. And I've had the luxury of getting to know each and every one of them and observing their classes. And I can tell you that they are completely student-centered and they have a joy for children and they uplift them every single day. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Hayes. Somewhere here, Mrs. Hayes. And she's going to speak about Ryan and Amanda.
Will you come to the microphone?
I feel a little funny having my back towards you guys, but I'm trying to ease our neck. So, it is my pleasure to talk about these two. You know, there's a lot of feedback from candidates that the Red Hook hiring process is not an easy one, which these two can definitely attest to. There's lots of rounds of interviews and devil lessons and things that we go through, but it's purposeful. We want to try to find the right people. And I can definitely say that we found the right people with these two. So, Ryan is part of our PE staff. He joined us four years ago following the resignation of a teacher that was well-loved, which is not an easy thing to do, but he did it in such an amazing manner. He is not only a part of our safety team, he's a part of our PE staff. And he brings tremendous enthusiasm and energy, which is necessary for a primary PE teacher every day. One of the things that's really remarkable about Ryan is that he knows the names of all 400 kids in the building. Not only does he know their names, he knows what interests they have, he knows the activities they have, he knows the sports they play on the weekend, and he uses that in his interactions with all of them. So, congratulations, Ryan, for having me on board. And Miss Amanda has been around for a long time and we're so happy to have her. She's permanently part of our teaching force. So, she is one of our kindergarten teachers and she's just in such an incredible person and incredible teacher. She's fun and enthusiastic. The kids love her. She's an amazing team player and collaborator. She participates in all of our professional development. You know, but one of the things that really impresses me about Amanda is her constant willingness to improve herself and reflect on her process. And she's grown so much as an educator. And she's actually now one of our resources in the building. People go to her for advice. So, she was asking me for a while, "Am I going to get it? Am I going to get it?" And I got it. So, congratulations, Amanda.
We now have Tiffany and she was unable to be with us tonight, but we are congratulating her for tenure in the area of a school counselor. And Stacy, do you just want to say a couple of quick things?
Hi, everybody. It's my pleasure to, it's my pleasure actually to thank the board for appointing Tiffany Schrepp. I know she was really torn about being able to be here tonight because this is such an important day. Tiffany is the definition of student-centered. She's extremely hardworking. She is 100% for the students at Lamb's. If you don't know her already, she's our fifth and sixth grade school counselor. When she hits the ground running in the morning, it is 100% for students. She's an amazing advocate. She also does a lot of professional development with our staff and support staff, which has been really key because her specialty area is social emotional support. So, it's thank you very much. And also, Dr. Zehedi and I just want to say that we're very enthusiastic for this appointment. Thank you.
And Mr. McKernan is going to talk about Nancy Keeney, who's been with us for, but she is looking for tenure as a secondary English teacher.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Third time's a charm, right Nancy? So, my pleasure to recognize Nancy Keeney for tenure. She was a transfer last year to high school. Was at the middle school for the last 10 years. I'm not sure. Came and hit the ground, came and hit the ground running. Met with her co-teachers, plan for effective instruction for all of her kids. She gets them doing authentic assessments. They've got these great letters about school start times should be later. The kids have done their research and the assessment was they have the right handles letters. So, just a consummate professional and feel that she's a part of the high school team. So, thank you and congratulations.
So, if Ryan and Amanda would also, and Nancy, come up here?
To make it official, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm being told by our district clerk, the board has to individually make a motion and a second. But please, stand up. So, we'll start with Ryan. So, to the board, I need a motion and a second to appoint tenure to Ryan Sherwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I need a motion and a second to appoint Amanda White tenure. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, in absence, I need a motion and a second to appoint Tiffany Schrepp. All in favor?
Aye.
And last, but certainly not least, I need a motion and a second to appoint Nancy Keeney tenure. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. So, we're going to take about 10 minutes to 15 minutes to do a little bit of the celebration for, and we'll be back to the people on Zoom and everyone else here. So, we're going to have some cake. Game's over.
Thank you. When you put the little... Nice to see you. We love you.
Yeah, I guess.
Did you just get the ticket? I'm staying with me.
You're after North of Ari.
You know, this is our night.
Fine, it's like, it's really cool and nice outside. I have a little new car and I have three new jeans. And I was like, oh, my son has shoes.
You know, a lot of holes.
Yes, yes, yes. Oh, they are great. All things very great. Now, you know where my son went month, month, month? And I just didn't get it right. No, it's nice. I know. It's nice. And then, because they tell you to do like virtual visits and get out and travel. Like when my son, I mean, he got this smacking and sticker. No, he went to, you know, he hated it. He hated it. He just ran off to mass. He loves it. Now, did you look at, what's the one, what's the one, like a question? How hard are more kicks? Look at there. Do they have music? That's, that might be worth it. Not that far. Very, very good. I think they have music.
I saw the portfolios sitting on the cutting desk every day I walked through. Somebody never moved. Was that a, did I forget?
No, it's like, it's not like, even if I'm in the back.
I don't know why they're there when I turn.
Okay, we're going to ask everybody to take a seat so we can resume the meeting. Thank you again. Okay, everyone back on Zoom. Okay, nobody came off. Okay. Okay, we're going to move forward. Oh, we're waiting for Bruce and Kitty. Sorry. We're going to move forward to Agenda Item Number Four, recognition.
So, it's my pleasure tonight to speak a little bit about one of our principals, who I have the privilege of acknowledging tonight, that truly understands. Are you listening? That listens very well. So, that truly understands the art and science of teaching and also understands the art and science of leadership. He brings joy every single day into this building. He's outside with a cowboy hat on a few times. He's been seen with a little ATV riding around the school a few times. But most importantly, he's an extremely hard-working, hard-working individual who is completely dedicated to children. He's pushed life thinking numerous times as a leader and that's what you want. You want to surround yourself with people that are going to tell you when things are not going well, but when things are going well. So, I really want to thank him for his wonderful work this year and his support. And most importantly, he likes to learn. When we get into education, we go on for our bachelor's degrees. We go on for our master's degrees. And Ryan has gone on for his doctorate degree, which is a huge thing to do with a family. And he has completed his doctorate degree. So, I would like to recognize Dr. Boy for his completion. And he likes to stay here. Tell us a little bit about your dissertation.
So, my dissertation, this will only take about an hour or four or five minutes. Thank you, the panel. Now, I actually did my dissertation on trauma-informed mindfulness practices here at the elementary school. And I have to say, of all the topics to choose in the year of the pandemic, mindfulness has been such a critical part of what we do every day. And our teachers are amazing and they're using it. So, it made my research more exciting and worthwhile. I couldn't have done this without my family. My wife Nicole is here. My dedication came from there. But it takes a lot of support from family and from the school district. And I love that the district recognizes this, this pursuit of lifelong learning is worthy of pursuit. It's what we teach every day. And as much as I've loved and engaged in this work, I'm happy it's in the rearview mirror. And I like getting a little time back. So, thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you so much. Okay, Agenda Item Number Five, student DOE member. I think I see Eli and Danny. How's it going? Hello.
I have too much to say other than, you know, end of the year stuff is happening. Out of the Bay Club, we have a few more meetings. We invited school schoolers to come, which has been a great, a great thing. But other than that, you know, end of the year, schools are good.
Okay. Hi, Danny, you look like you're in the car. Yeah. Frozen in the car. Hi, Danny. I think you're muted. Okay. Well, if he comes back, we'll welcome Danny to make some comments. But thank you, Eli. Does the board have any questions for Eli or Danny?
Just good luck with the end of the school year, guys. And you have been heartfelt all year long, kind of keeping us in touch with what's going on. And we truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, we have our first recognition of visitors. We would like to invite anyone in person to come to the microphone, introduce yourself. We'd like to ask you to keep your comments to under three minutes. And the board and superintendent are going to listen and welcome your comments. And then, if there's, I think we have some emailed comments that Elena will read. And if someone on Zoom, do they email you at this point or if they want to speak? Yeah, if they, if you are on Zoom and you want to email Elena to speak, just do so, please. And we have a second recognition of visitors later in the agenda.
Why, why do we have to email to speak?
I'm sorry. Can you please introduce yourself?
Nicole Hoffman.
We're just, you know what, Nicole, really, it's just about meeting management, particularly with the complexity. You just want to know who's lining up to keep it orderly.
Right.
That's all.
So, so at the, so, so can, you know, can I request to speak?
Sure.
It's easier.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks.
Would you like to speak right now?
No, I mean, I'll wait until, I'm just trying. I know that you guys are just setting up the order for the meeting and I'll wait until, you know, it's appropriate for me to address the things that I want to address. But I just want to make sure that when the time comes that I'll be able to do so.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in person? Yeah, hi.
Kamala. My name is Lisa Colero. And I just want to say thank you for resuming meetings in person, for all of you that are here and everyone who's here. I think it's the right messaging at the right time for our community and our students and demonstrates that we can get together in person thoughtfully and safely. But thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, I'm going to, is there anyone else here who wants to speak?
Christine Herlander had emailed me that she wanted to speak.
Okay, great. Christine, are you there?
Yeah, hi. Sorry, I wasn't sure I was going to because I wasn't in person. But I just wanted to make a suggestion. Well, thank you all. I'm Christine Herlander. I have a seventh grader at the middle school. I have a daughter who will be in fifth grade next year in the district. I know you're all looking ahead to this one-time money, that you're going to be sort of a one-and-done from the federal government. And I just wonder if there might be some thought given to improving the technology so that when, if you do decide to continue to have meetings on Zoom as well as in person, like that it might just work a little better, like with an owl camera or, you know, I don't know what the setup is in the room right now. But I know, I mean, I think we'd all maybe agree, one of the great things has been the level of engagement with the meetings because folks have been at home. So, just trying to maybe think about how to continue that in a way so that more people can attend and more, maybe be more part of the meeting than what we're viewing right now. It's just an idea, like one of those owl cameras or, you know, I'm sure there's, I've been in meetings where, you know, I've been on Zoom, but I've been able to see the speakers, you know, as they talk. So, that was just a suggestion because I know the money, as I understand it, isn't sustainable. Meaning, you know, it's not going to lead to whatever. But that you could use it towards something like that that would really build community engagement and make it possible. It was pretty amazing to see 200 people at a board meeting. And I've been to them in person before and it's usually pretty underattended. So, I just wanted to put in a little... So I just wanted to put in a little pitch for that, but I'm sure you guys have great ideas you're coming up with. But that was just some suggestion, so that's it.
Thank you Christine.
Thank you.
I see someone in the back, would you like to come up? Introduce yourself, thank you.
So I wanna say thank you for, uh, for tuning in.
A little closer, yeah.
So thank you for letting us do this. I feel like it's much better than doing.
A little closer, honey.
And also, this is not intended for the teachers. I love the teachers, they're doing great.
Oh, and what's, I'm sorry, what's her name for the public?
Tanya Felwell.
Okay.
Um, so I wanna start off by saying, I guess, not that for the teachers, love that they've been great all year. So when me and my husband started looking for our house, I pushed for him to move to Red Oak for the community and the school district. We knew that it was a great school district. Now I wish that we had the means to send our kids to private school, but we don't, we're gonna be, we're gonna be adult. I know this year has been really hard on everybody. Uh, sorry. I also went to the dentist and no pain is wearing on, so. So back when we were on the Zoom meetings, when we were talking about sending the kids back full-time, obviously, you guys showed that you did not care about our children's mental health by not sending them back full-time for five days a week. Even after our parents and guardians were telling you how much it was affecting our children. And working in the mental health field, as I do, I not only saw it with my own children, but I saw it with many other families. And yes, even the Red Oak School District. Because I was hearing that it didn't happen in our district, but it was happening in our district and still is. But now, we are harming our children physically. Since the warmer weather has, is becoming, since warmer weather has become, our children have not been having mask breaks. I've asked my children every day when they get off the bus, how many mask breaks have you had? Have you been drinking your water? On night stays, I would get a one or two mask break, not knowing that my son was counting his snack break as a mask break. So when I started asking him otherwise, he would say, no, no mask breaks. Not without my snack or drinking my water. My daughter, however, said, we don't get mask breaks unless we go outside. After clarification, I found out she has a BAC in her classroom, which is awesome, but I know, not all classrooms have RBCs. Oh, and on the playgrounds, they're allowed to, as long as they were away, not playing on the playground. They had other masks on if they were playing on the playground. So even after emailing the superintendent, and getting her email saying that they have extra masks, mask breaks, and water breaks, I'm calling DX because I'm still getting from my kids that they are not getting from. My son went to school with a mask that just went around the neck and pulled up. Um, and he came home with a new mask from the school because I know that there was two loose and it was falling off their face. But that was okay for me because my son's a freak. And he wasn't that hot coming home. He comes home red-faced, lethargic. He's fallen asleep multiple times on the school bus. And I know that that is not from, like, previous years when your kid is tired from learning and falling asleep on the school bus because they've been in school all day. He's in school for two hours. He's not falling asleep because he's tired of learning. He's falling asleep because of the heat and having the mask on his face.
Tanya, I just have to, I want to listen more, I just need. Yes, just in case there's more people who wanna talk. So bring it home, you're doing well.
That's okay, I have another stream. Uh, so that, I mean, that's pretty much what I have to say is, again, not intended for the teachers, because they're doing everything they can. It's more so like, you guys have had the opportunity and you haven't, you haven't done anything. Like, help these kids. Come, come back to us, help these kids. Don't do this school or agenda stuff like every other school is doing. Come back for these kids and help them.
Definitely, appreciate it, appreciate you. Thank you, Tanya. Anyone else in person before, or on Zoom before we read some comments? Sarah, hi Sarah.
Hey, everybody. Sarah, I'm Logan here. Can you see Zoom? So I emailed you comments later and I'll just recap them really quickly and that way you don't have to read them while I'm sitting right there. I just wanted to say thank you for providing both options. I know from being on a board that it's really important to be in person. You know, there's nothing like trying to make decisions over Zoom when some of us haven't even seen each other all year. So I know this is important for you, I think it's important for the community, you've already heard that. But I'm really glad that you also have the Zoom option. So we can see there's right now 49 participants on Zoom. And as somebody else mentioned, normally there's maybe, on a 10-year night, it's usually a good night, right? Because everybody knows there's cake and we love our, our teachers. But typically, there's like five people at a public hearing. It's often zero people that speak. So like Christine, I'm really interested in seeing this continue even beyond the pandemic, because I think it's an important tool. A lot of parents, you know, like even I, like I used to rush here after soccer, you know, that ended at six, a lot of people have work and kid things and all kinds of things. And to be able to listen from home, I think is really important. And I love the way you have this set up. It looks really workable and hopefully not too much on Elena, we'll see. But anyway, so I just wanna advocate for that, for both things. And one last thing, which is, I'm a fifth grader parent and Mrs. Shrupf Tiffany has been so amazing. So I'm so glad you gave her tenure, because she's been incredible for the kids making the transition. So thank you.
Thank you Sarah.
Thank you.
Cindy, do you wanna come up and read so I don't have to read your comments? Remember to introduce yourself Cindy.
I shall. I have a small song to dance first. Hello, board, if I face this way, does Zoom see me? Where's the camera? Yes, we see you Cindy. And where's the best light? That's what I'm looking at, thank you. Hello Zoom, I'm so glad you're here. More of you there than there are here, which tells us that this is a great thing to do, I think. Whatever, whatever. Thank you Board of Education for continuing to offer the option of joining the monthly meetings remotely even as you return in person. I've never been able to attend very many Board of Education meetings because of childcare and travel. I made a point of having my husband do all the chauffeuring this evening, so I could be here tonight because I wanted to see all you wonderful folks in person. But generally speaking, that is much more convenient and a sign of a thriving democracy, it seems to me, to have so many people able to participate remotely. I love Christine's idea of spending a bit of that money to get better camera work. But although I have to say, what we have tonight for a first-time effort, bravo, bravo. Well done. This is fantastic, it really is. And I guess, so I just, I'm hoping that we can continue this. I think it's really crucial, keeping people involved. It lets more people hear the important work that you're doing and stay engaged. And I think that's crucial. I also wanna say that, um, I appreciate how difficult this whole pandemic negotiation has been. And there has been no playbook. We've all been sort of making it up as we go along based on directives from the state and, and directives from the CDC and all of that. The fact that our kids are safe, we're coming out of this, they can now be maskless out in the playground after the third email. I believe that one, thank you very much. And I think that's fantastic. But I have to say, I'm, I'm glad we took the precautions that we did. And I'm glad we continue to take the precautions that we're taking because it means that everybody stayed safe. And we will come out the other end of this and we'll all be a whole community again. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you Cindy. All right, we're gonna do some reading.
I'm here on Zoom, I just would like to speak when the time presents.
Okay, hi, can you introduce yourself?
Hi Nicole Hoffman, I have a first grader. And, you know, I would like to say, I'd like to ask the board themselves if they have seen any science that suggests that masks are in any way effective and or safe to be utilized in the, the public school setting? Is that being taken into any consideration? Also, has there been any legal clarity from the attorney related to, what guidance are we actually following at this point? Are we following the Department of Health guidance? Or are we following the SED guidance or somewhere in between?
Okay, just to be clear, it's not a Q and A, but I do believe Janet's gonna address a lot of the questions that you do have in her superintendent's report, which is coming up on the agenda. So we just ask for your patience until she updates the group, including some other agenda items.
Okay, so we're not allowed to ask questions?
No, you're allowed to ask questions, but, you know, just, it is the way board meetings run. It is a listening exercise, the board listens. We, I know, we don't love that statement, I did not make up that rule myself.
I mean, is there anything about this that could be, like, you know, we, 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 we're, we're not allowed to walk into the school to ask questions and present ourselves? I mean, could we have some of this be like parent-directed at any point?
No, and it is, I'm asking you, I don't know how many meetings you've attended Nicole, but I, I promise you that a lot of the information that parents seek is addressed throughout the meeting. And as I mentioned, Janet will be talking about the mask mandates and among other things in a few moments.
Well, that's the other thing I would like to address. As far as I can see, and I, and I am requesting clarity on this end, first of all, it's not a mandate, it's guidance. And fundamentally, guidance and mandates are not synonymous. Guidance by its most abstract definition is help and advice. So I do think that we need some clarity on that. We can't have ambiguity where that's concerned. It's just not fair. So there, there needs to be, that, that does need to be addressed from a legal perspective, that this is guidance. And I truly feel like parents are being, you know, we're hearing testimonies from actual parents that are taking their children off the bus. And their children are getting off of the bus fatigued. They're getting off of the bus, I could speak for my own, with her throat hurting, red-faced, lethargic. And this is all due to the mask being the catalyst. And, you know, the, the guidance, as I stated earlier, is very, very clear. It doesn't use words. Where it includes a physical risk to the child, the mask guidance is void at that point. So at what point do we have a parental, well, first of all, we have a parental obligation to first and foremost protect our children. And that happens in the home from the parents directly. I appreciate that, you know, the school is, you know, stating their intentions to continue keeping the children safe. But again, when you have a parent, after parent, after parent telling you that they're taking their child off the bus, dehydrated, fatigued, and lethargic, that needs to be addressed. That is clearly a physical risk to the child.
Thank you. No, we will, we will be addressing that shortly. But we are listening and we hear what you're saying. And it is definitely something that we are concerned about. So just thank you for participating and hang in there for some further information. Anyone else in person or on Zoom? Okay, we have to read some comments now that were emailed ahead of time.
Hello everyone, my name is Laura Roberts. I'm so happy that the Board of Ed is able to meet in person and I really appreciate the value of having face-to-face interactions, even if I can't be there in person tonight. While it's wonderful that life seems to be heading back to some normalcy, once silver lining of the pandemic has been the increased community engagement in our schools and greater awareness of how they are run. This engagement was an opportunity for many of us because the meetings were held in Zoom. My hope is that the school will not only continue to offer a virtual livestream option, but also allow those virtual attendants to contribute and respond in real time just as the in-person attendants are allowed to do. As a community, we have become more adept at virtual meetings and this has allowed greater access to this public forum. Not all who attend the meetings participate in making statements, but all who attend are able to listen and learn about our schools and how they are run. It's a valuable exercise in civic learning and should be made available to as many of the people as possible. Livestreaming these meetings helps make that access a reality and allowing all to contribute during the comment period further supports civic engagement. Thank you for all you do.
Uh, the next one is Lorelei Chevel. Dear school board members and superintendent Warren, thank you for, thank you for all you do to support our community's schools, teachers, administrators, parents, and students. As a parent with two kids currently in the school district, I'm ready to urge you to offer a virtual live access and participation in both VOE meetings via Zoom. While there was so much waffle about the pandemic, there were also silver linings, adaptations that had been made that proved positive, such as virtual board meetings. Zoom access gave more people the opportunity to attend and participate regularly in weeks. Should board meetings return to in-person only, I fear many people who would like to attend won't be able to. For example, people who are sick or physically unable to attend in person, or single parents, or parents or infants, or caregivers who can't secure or afford a visitor or whose household has one car that is being used by someone else at the time of need. The list goes on. A virtual option makes access easier and more widely available and thus more fair. I'd also encourage you to make the virtual option more robust by continuing to allow virtual participants to speak themselves during couple comments. Keep the option of letters being read by admin for those who prefer to write in. But please give those who would like to speak themselves the opportunity to do so along with those who might decide to speak up in a moment as happens to us. I appreciate this requires a little more technical effort, but as a quick internet search proves, other school districts are successfully doing live in-person meetings with simultaneous virtual access. So hopefully, after a slight learning curve and perhaps a small investment in a bare minimum of digital equipment and software, it won't be too hard for the civic and automatic, much appreciated and well-used part of all board meetings going forward. Just to give you an example, I'm including a link to one school district's instructions for how people can participate in person via Zoom webinar or by submitting written comments to this sample meeting. Thanks for your time and consideration. This one is from Shayna Wyler. It's great that folks, including the members of the Red Oak Central School District Board of Education, are now able to meet in person. A silver lining of this pandemic is that more community members have been able to participate in the process of video conference meetings. Board participation is key to a robust school district that takes everyone into account. At this first in-person meeting, I beg you for continuing with offering video conference as an option for listening in the meeting. I'm disappointed, though, that real-time comments by those conferencing and cannot be made. In the past, I have written to the board expressing my concern for the board's overall communication and responsiveness to community questions and comments. Enabling only write-in comments by those participating virtually is just a step backwards on this front. I am hoping that this first in-person meeting is just a stepping stone and that perhaps you are still working out the case. I implore you to implement a policy of always allowing video conference participation and to remain stay real-time commenting by those participating remotely. This is Pat Diega. Dear superintendent Warren and the, and the Red Oak Central School District Board of Education. You know, earlier last week, when the inquiry about whether or not Zoom board meetings will continue when full-time in-person meeting starts up in the call, I did not get any reply, but I saw a letter on Friday in order to change the students' board meeting and how the virtual pace will be changed with removing live public comments. I am ready to request that you maintain the existing format for Zoom meetings that allow for interactive, engaging experience with the live public comment sections even when in-person meetings do. This is fundamentally an accessibility and equity matter which gives at-home participants the same rights as the in-person attendees. Due to the pandemic, many institutions have had to move to virtual ways of next, and many of them are keeping these virtual options in place because they work well. As we've seen with the virtual board meetings, participation and engagement by the public is greater than ever. So it would be counterproductive to eliminate live virtual participation when the system is already set and thriving. Any families of challenges making it to in-person meetings at that time of day on a regular basis? Work schedule conflicts, lack of childcare, or having young children at home make it impossible to physically attend in person. Those with health issues or other challenges also benefit them from a virtual model or viewing the recorded meetings when it's convened for them. Virtual attending families should not lose their ability to speak at live meetings when the in-person families get paid. There may be topics or points raised that could not be foreseen to address with the written comments submitted before the meeting. It's exciting to feel some return to normalcy with presuming in-person meetings, but to maintain transparency, accessibility, and equitable options for everyone wanting to attend board meetings, it's imperative to continue with the interactive live virtual format in addition to in-person offering and continued hosting meetings online. So thank you for your time and consideration this time.
How many, are there, how many more are similar?
One.
Okay.
Woo, okay. This is from Allison Wolf. I'm ready to request the link for tonight's board meeting, sorry. I'd also like to state for the record that under full support, I'm continuing to offer a virtual option livestream for board meetings moving forward, as I believe this is a tremendous benefit to making access to these meetings as accessible as possible.
Okay, thank you. Just for the education of the public, we've never exercised this before. When there is a comment that's repetitively made and not trying to silence anyone, if there is a theme, the board president has the right to call the comment, meaning that, you know, there's a theme, we can bundle the names again, not trying to silence. But those were great emails. As you can tell, there was a very similar theme, so I'm happy that we read through all of them, and I'm just educating the public that in the essence of some circumstances, that is a right of the board to do that. We're not doing that at the present, but just a note to, to, to the group going forward. Anybody else?
No, uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to agenda item number seven, Board of Education review member comments. We'll start with committee review. Johanna, do you want to talk about policy?
We met in policy, and last time we had the first read of those policies that we reviewed, so we have it on schedule. We were going to talk about equity, inclusion from school boards, and possibly year one.
Tie in the DLT. Great. And we have a couple of policies on the agenda that will be first read tonight as well. Just one? No? Okay. Any other comment committees need? Maggie, mental health?
I don't think, I don't think any of the committees that I'm on have met since our last meeting.
Okay. DLT, Jen, do you want to talk a little bit about it?
So we had our second day-long meeting for the DLT, which was incredible and inspiring. We discussed mission statement, vision statement, the attributes of a graduate, the profile of a graduate, and we also established goals under various aspects of the district, such as curriculum, technology, social emotional health, and communication. And we, we covered a lot, and I think we came away with some really strong things that will now move on to the building level and for leaders in the school district to see and reflect on and give feedback about. They're fantastic, and I look forward to being able to share them with everyone and get feedback.
Excellent. And I think Janet's going to do a nice presentation on that in a little bit. Anyone else on DLT?
You know, it was a very exciting and very collaborative day, and, and it was worthwhile work.
Excellent. Okay, um, safety, nothing yet, I don't believe?
We, we have a safety meeting. We met with Al Charis, and he reviewed the district-wide safety plan. They also talked about the new radios coming in and possibly having some backup radios for carts and the like. We also asked, though, there were some safety concerns for outdoor use for students, and everyone was reassured that with more community in and out of the building, that there would be necessary signage that might need to occur. Also, in terms of where you place poles, so that, you know, it's a little bit more restrictive as to immediate student contact by the public. Also, that the students are never unsupervised, and that there is a plan that is in motion, and that they do have radios, and they do have safe protocols to follow in the event of any emergency, so.
Okay. And then we still have the communications meeting before the end of the year. Soon, okay. Anything else on committees?
Is this a good time to talk about the school board?
Yes, as we dovetail into member comments.
All right. I sit as the advocate for the Dutchess County School Boards from Red Hook. Last Thursday, we had a meeting, our last meeting of the year. There is an application in the Poughkeepsie school system for a charter school. The different members of this committee are from all the component districts, and we talked about charter schools in general, and that charters take away significant funding from districts. They are not held accountable for the funding from the districts that they get from. Charter schools serve their interests. They cherry pick their students, and there's little to no tolerance for children with special needs, and also for uni busmen. Public education and public interest, within a belief of supporting every student and the right of teachers and staff to unite, was what public education supports. So there is a letter that the school boards wanted to have drafted to oppose the Little Border Charter School. It would cause a financial burden to the Poughkeepsie school system. It's not like some of these other bigger districts or smaller district Poughkeepsie. Just for example, year one, what they're asking would be 1.79% of Poughkeepsie's total budget, which would be $1,871,424. It would be $13,725 per student, and that would be to support 120 students. By year five, the anticipated cost for supporting 360 students would be $5,614,272, or 5% of the total budget of Poughkeepsie, which would be equivalent to them assisting teachers and 5.374% of their total budget. Also, there's no detailed curriculum or measurable benchmarks. Also, it would put an additional drain for elementary teachers that are certified or qualified, and they have low community buy-in. They only had eight support letters and 56 signatures to a petition to open the school. So the School Board Association would like us to join with the other districts. There's Waukesha, Beetham, Arlington, there's five so far, Pauling. To add our name to a draft opposition letter against the opening of the school.
In opposition, okay.
So I open it up for discussion. If it is the will of the board to oppose the charter school, then they would be led to add our name to this joint letter.
And this is our second time broaching the topic. Does anybody want to open up the discussion? Okay, I'll open the discussion. I did not know much about charter schools prior to this topic being raised, and I did my own research. At this time, particularly in Poughkeepsie, and given the evidence stated of what it would do to the Poughkeepsie, Poughkeepsie school district, and being obviously a big proponent of public education, I would be in support of adding our name to the letter of opposition. I think the long-term effects of charter schools in an already struggling district, when I think there's a new superintendent who's trying really hard to get back on track with all this federal funding, you know, I think we need to be careful, you know, about the cherry picking of students and taking resources away from a school that already is struggling.
And they've had some nice programs in terms of trying to improve the Poughkeepsie school system. That was a struggling district, and a five-year improvement plan, most of those programs would be decimated. And also with charters, someone from Red Hook would choose to go to this and be put into a lottery system to be chosen to attend this charter school. So it affects all the different districts because it takes money away from the home district, so.
Any other comments or thoughts?
Yeah, I think, well, first of all, Johanna, thank you for your thorough report about that, and we have received backup information from Kelly Lappin of the Dutchess County School Boards. And yes, I, I agree with the statements that at this point in time, I have, I support us adding our name to that letter.
I also support supporting public schools over adding charter schools to the area or the district or district, really. So I'm glad that this will go forward as well, and in favor of that.
Great. So there you have it, Jo.
All right, so I can say that we unanimously, with the exception of Ross and I'll be here, supported.
Okay. We're gonna, I think we're gonna do a motion. Sounds like a motion. So I would like a motion and a second. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have any comments? We know we are doing.
You guys covered it well.
All right, there you go. Well, and again, I echo.
You hit all the key points.
Yeah, yeah. And then I would say to Kelly Lappin, let's see how we can lean in and support Poughkeepsie, you know? Let's put our heads together, keep them moving along in the right direction, so. Okay, any other topics before we move on to our reorganizational meeting date discussion? Anything, Maggie?
Well, yeah, thanks, Kate. I was going to talk about the Zoom option. I'm thrilled to see 50 Zoom participants and that we're kind of having the best of both worlds for now. And I do echo a lot of the comments made here tonight about wanting to see this continued. But I really want to focus on thanking Elena Mascol tremendously, and to John Westenkopf for all the things he did to make this possible. His fine effort, it is astonishing. And even if it just stays like this, it's astonishing. I was interested in the comment about an owl camera. I jotted that down, so I'm going to look up what that is. And so many of the letters talked about the people that this serves by continuing this moving forward. I won't repeat that, but I will add, I don't think anyone had talked about the teachers. And I see a lot of teachers here on the Zoom screen, a lot of teachers' names, after a long day, to have to then go home, come back, that can be challenging, and some of our teachers don't live in our district, so that we're able to provide this for them as well, I think is tremendous. And lastly, I would say that having both in-person and virtual, the third part of that, the trifecta, would be having all of this filmed and put up on the website, as we have been doing for the past few years, including through Zoom. I'm not sure how that's going to work.
It's working. We have Panda in the background.
Great. Panda's in the house, all right.
Panda's in the house.
I think that's wonderful for those people who just maybe this time period is not easy for them to attend in any of the ways that we're able, they'll be able to still stay informed after the fact by, by watching the film. So again, Elena and John, thank you really tremendously from the heart, and I commend Red Hook for doing something that other people are not maybe doing, and how we're doing it, I think is tremendous, and I look forward to it continuing again as that silver lining of something that we've learned. Thank you all.
Thank you. And also duly noted, one, one of the comments mentioned that we're not allowing access to public comments, but I think you've all seen tonight that we, we are, so that's part of the plan. Okay, anything else from the board? Yep, Johanna?
I wanted to make mention, part of tenure is putting together your portfolios and going in and reviewing portfolios. And what's lovely about this district is that if you're here and you're engaged and you're active, you get to know folks, and, but it's another lens in which we as a board get to see the work that you do in order to prepare for tenure. And so it was, it was wonderful to sit down in Kitty's office and take a journey into four different and varied portfolios. And I pulled a little clip from each of the portfolios, and I'd like to start out with saying that one portfolio said, "Two most important days of your life, the day that you are born and the day that you find your why." And it was relevant because of the work of the DLT, because we, we talked a lot about finding our passion, our why. And so one knew in eighth grade that she wanted to be a school counselor, and one always wanted to be a teacher. One learned through team sports and organizational skills and time management and, and the pride of, of working with kids. That one said that, and I thought this was wonderful, that you greet students with a smile, and that you learn something new each day and you challenge yourself. They were all very excited. They see themselves as a positive impact on our school community, and that a good teacher lasts a lifetime. That you meet students at different stages, and you give them strategies to cope with challenges, and you build your confidence, and you give the love of teaching while building trust and allowing children to be themselves. So it was a wonderful journey to go through your portfolios, and it was an honor, so thank you very much. And also, I'd like to thank Eli, and he won our Board of Education Service Award at Awards Night, and wonderful young man, a role model, and super cool, and we wish him wonderful things, and congratulations to the graduating class.
Thank you, Johanna. So thoughtful, thank you. Oh, Jen, you want to say something?
Yes, just really briefly, I just wanted to say, I have just finished a three-day mandated health and safety training that's mandated for childcare providers, and I've come away with a renewed appreciation for what it takes to keep children safe, a very difficult, challenging thing in irregular times. And so I just want to say how much I support the decisions that our school is making and our superintendent leaders here to keep our children safe at all ages, particularly for those children who are too young yet to be vaccinated. And I just wanted to really make sure that we try in this home stretch of the school year to really see how we can find solutions together, create some understandings about how to kind of get through this last few weeks of school and, and celebrate them as much as we can.
Thank you. Okay, we have to have a quick conversation about the reorg meeting, given the special election. So can you just recap for everyone, Elena, the timeline for the special election and our obligation for when we set the reorg meeting, like time-wise?
So the special election is Tuesday, July 13. The reorganizational meeting has to take place the first 15 days in July. Last meeting had talked about having a reorg meeting on the 15th, which is completely fine, but I need to ratify the results of the vote from the 13th within 24 hours of announcing those, those results, so. I, I, I would, you know, you would have to have a meeting on the 14th. I, I, you know, you would have to have a meeting on the 14th and the 15th, if you were gonna do that. I don't know when I'm gonna have the results of the meeting on the 13th. So I'd hate to say, you know, come at nine o'clock and you might have to wait. And I, you know, ratify them then. So I just wanted to point out that I understand that you don't wanna have, you know, a vote and then elect someone, like what happened with Jennifer, and have her take the office the next day. But we actually know that ahead of time going in, so I don't know, I don't really have a solution other than.
Why don't you just have the meeting on the 14th?
Right, right.
Do that and do everything.
Yeah, so they did agree, the board did agree last time to have it on the 15th, so I just wanted to.
No, no, she's saying that, I think the conversation last time was like, give the new members a day to breathe.
Right.
But in hindsight, I think what Elena's saying is that, you know, we have to ratify the vote and get this meeting done by July 15th.
Right.
And you have to ratify within 24 hours. So it makes more sense to shift it to the 14th. I, you know, I don't know what a day difference will make, I mean, for the new members, but I'm hoping to hear, you know, why people think we need to wait 48 hours to the 15th. I don't, Maggie, did you have a reason?
No, actually, I work every Thursday night, so I, you know, I can cancel work for that one time if I had to, but I actually prefer the 14th. I don't wanna speak for Russ because he's not here.
Right.
But I think that he, he had kind of put that, put that in there. You know, we can go back to the videotape and see exactly why. You know, and to have that extra day of breathing room, I think would have been fine, but if it causes some logistic issues as far as the ratification, I am fine with doing it on the 14th and that's our normal night when people would be more used to that. Anyway.
And, and I mean, and no matter what, the new members, since this is a unique, we've never done this before, special election, so there's no way to avoid it not being sort of trial by fire. And really, the reorg meeting for the public knowledge is just election of officers and approving, you know, various posts like Elena Mascol District Clerk. So it's not, you know, super complicated. And, you know, so anyone running, put these dates in your, in your calendar if necessary. Okay, so does everyone agree? Are you guys okay with the 14th?
It's my birthday.
Well, we'll make it a reorg.
Yeah, as long as you bring me a cupcake.
All right. We're gonna, you know, we'll freeze that cupcake just to be efficient. And well, I'm kidding, we'll bring you a cupcake. Are you sure?
Yeah.
There's no other group you'd rather be with than us, right? I know, I have a mutual feeling.
I know.
Jen, are you okay with the 14th?
Yeah, I thought it was actually exciting to just jump right in.
I loved it. And what time? You, what time?
We could do it during the day.
We could do it during the day? Like an afternoon, like a four?
I, I think for, I mean, for consistency, this is just my two cents and for, again, participation from the community who is interested in either attending virtually or in person, you know, the evening seems to be working. You know, so that's just my, that's just my, my thoughts, to continue consistently with the time.
Okay. Well, that'll dovetail into our next conversation in a minute about the summer calendar and timing. Do you guys have any thoughts on the timing of the meeting?
The evening makes sense to me.
Evening makes sense. Okay, Jo?
I'm flexible.
Okay, so just keep it to, you know, do we need an exact, or can we just do six? Or seven? Okay. So Maggie, would you prefer to keep it at seven or is six, what would you prefer?
I mean, to me, consistency for, for, for the public. But, you know, if that's, if that's problematic for anybody, we could certainly revisit it. And we're not sure if we're gonna need an executive session before then or not anyway. So I, I would go with consistency, but if that's a problem for anybody, we can change that.
All right. Well, Elena was just, I mean, again, I am all for consistency, but I'm also all for alerting the public. Elena's just making the point that we do tend to, as a board, have a little bit of flexibility with time in the summer because we don't have as many meetings so a little earlier, particularly as we think about all this setup and breakdown. So I would be, I would be supportive if we give the public advance notice of doing it even just an hour earlier. Okay. I mean, you know, I think if we just alert the public, it's just, you know, we want to, we just want to acknowledge that, you know, the summer meetings might not be as intense. And if we alert the public ahead of time, maybe that hour difference is okay. Do you guys agree? Johanna?
Yeah.
And Jen?
Sure.
Okay, great. Then, then Jo would head out and really party.
And we'll need to check with, with Russ, yes?
Yeah, we'll check with Russ.
But we will tentatively put it down for six o'clock on the 14th then.
Okay.
Is there, well, maybe that will be the next discussion, I, of, if there's a meeting between, before then. I know we have the meeting on the 23rd.
Well, I think Bruce is gonna speak.
So I'm just, at some point, because we're not doing this on the first Tuesday of July, we do need a resolution of the board. We can do that on the fly tonight. We can put it in the consent agenda or we could put it on the June 23rd meeting. But we would need a resolution of the board since we're, that's how the law.
Okay. You wanna do that for next week, so you're not, okay, we'll do it for the next. Is that okay? Is that enough time? Okay. Okay, so to Maggie's point, summer calendar, what are, what are we looking at?
Yeah, I think it was our.
My?
Nope. So it was our recommendation to, we have a meeting on the, tell me again, the 14th? 14th and then move into August 4th and then maybe the 25th. I think that would help us with any personnel.
Okay, great. We just look, okay, August 4th and that's the week before. When does school start the, second? Six, sixth, okay. Does anybody on the board have a conflict that they know of or vacation?
So to review, we have June 23rd, which is already on the calendar. Then we just have the reorg switched to the 14th. And if I was hearing Janet correctly, Wednesday, the 4th of August and then Wednesday, the 25th of August, yes?
Correct, because I believe we did have a retreat in between there probably as well.
Right.
Okay, that, that won't affect the public, so we can hopefully figure that out amongst ourselves either tonight or, you know, hopefully when Russ is here. And again, they would be at either the six or seven o'clock time?
Yeah, I would like to.
Yeah, you're saying.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds fair.
Okay. Great.
And again, all contingent on Russ.
Right. So maybe that does make sense. I had written down, do you guys mind if I send an email asking you for dates for the Board of Ed retreat? I mean, it is challenging because we won't have the new members' schedules, so maybe we'll look for something in August, although a lot of people vacation in August.
Yeah, I, I think we'd all like to include the two new members.
Well, and maybe it's something we, I mean, you think it would be too close to the school year to push it into early September? For doing a lot of, no, for the board retreat.
I mean, personally, I think it would help us as a board to do it earlier than that once we know who the two new members are, to kind of give them an orientation to who we are and so we can learn who they are, but that's just my thought.
So Elena, how difficult or how much time do you need if we all had that, the board retreat conversation on July 14th? Unless we have it like here? All right, so why don't we table the board retreat conversation to the reorg meeting? And that way we have every member and then we can decide when and where. Right?
I thought we were all going to your house, Kate.
Absolutely. Float to the pool.
The administrative retreat is on the 9th and the 10th of August.
Okay.
So we will be inviting you for the second part of the day on the 10th, most likely. If that works for people. So I'll send that out.
Okay, great. So I feel like we got the summer calendar buttoned up and we'll table the retreat until the reorg. Sound good?
I just have one suggestion for the retreat. Could we have a little bit of information about what that entails? Like this for myself and also for the, the future board members that will be joining us? Is it a full day? Because that might affect people's looks.
I think it can be whatever we want it to be, truthfully. I, I mean, I think the goal is for a board, particularly a board with, you know, that will have several new members to come together. We typically discuss board goals during our retreat. I think it's also a little bit of, you know, getting to know one another, a little collaboration in terms of, you know, how we want to focus on the year ahead, how we wanna run meetings. And if there are any topics of discussion or any issues, we typically will hire some kind of trainer to help us work through potential communication. It really is designed, really, whatever we want it to be. So hopefully between now and July, we can all come together with potential topics. Again, it's gonna be a lot of information for the new folks. When I joined the board, we had a retreat and it was, we did a lot of relationship building. There, I'll be honest, there was some tumult, so we had to kind of work through that a little bit. Just sort of, like, again, refocus on board goals, what is our governance role, really coming together in a uniform way to approach the school year so that we're all on the same page, particularly given how many, you know, new people that are coming and going and trial by fire. But Johanna, you have significant more experience than Maggie, so please try that if I'm not including something.
No, I think that the, the role of governance might be different to each person and so to get everyone in a similar mindset and, and and to have those conversations about who we are and why we want to be board members and for the best interest of the students. And it's really building our team and a cohesiveness of action.
And I think one of the things that we've discussed in previous retreats and also on our administrative retreats is the idea of coherence, that we're all working towards a common goal and that the district and the board and the school is all aligned for that, those goals. I think that was big. And one of the largest duties that you have is evaluating meetings, providing goals and direction to, so that's really important, that there's an understanding about that as well.
Maggie, do you have any other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think, Kate, you summed it up really well and Johanna and Janet explained it well also. I mean, I've been through several of them, not as many as Johanna, obviously. And they each take on a different form, but they really, I think, for me, the best ones have been the ones that have collaboratively been planned, where we all kind of say what we, what we kind of need and, you know, it goes from there. But low fee is good and low budget is better.
Right. And half day, full day, but even a full day is like, maybe like nine to two or nine to three, so. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, anything else in Board of Ed? All right, we're gonna move to agenda item number eight, Superintendent Communications.
So I will start talking a little bit about the mask situation that occurred this past week and then I'll, right, Bruce will help me out with this because the timeline is pretty fast. So we share your frustration. Dr. Zucker, who represents the New York Department of Health, wrote a letter to the CDC at four o'clock on Friday, this past Friday, asking the CDC if it was okay if schools did not have students wear masks indoors. He assumed that if there wasn't a response, that schools could immediately start doing that on Monday. On Sunday, I think around 2:00 PM, the State Education Department, who also provides school guidance, said that is absolutely not acceptable. We are not allowed to follow that guidance. So at that point, I did send out communication both Friday and Sunday. Then Monday, the executive order came from Cuomo that we can have outdoor no masks, but indoors need to stay with masking. So then on my meeting today with the Dutchess County Department of Health, we continue to need to mask indoors, but not outdoors. So that was the timeline of events. Those are the different agencies that should be working together. So it was very confusing to the public. It was confusing to us. Just to let you know that we do not get any knowledge before you do. I'm actually, sometimes you find out before us because the media finds out before us. So Fri- on Friday at four o'clock is absolutely not ideal for a school district, period, or anyone to be trying to grapple with what we, we're trying to figure out what was written and what was really the guidance. We are required to follow the guidance. We can put more in place. For instance, the guidance said that you can continue to like, have students wear masks outside. We can't go lower than the guidance. So we can always do more, we just can't do less. So we share the frustration that we've been dealing with this all year long. As a superintendent group, and I'm sure as like business officials, are asking for guidance right now for next year. Our goal is 100% five days a week. That is what we're looking for. We're assuming there will not be masks. That is our goal moving forward. We're hoping that there will not be masks. You know, I just want people to know that the frustration is that there is many agencies that are all working or telling the school district what they need to do. So it is very challenging. I understand. I have a child that goes to a high school all day, that these are very difficult. We are encouraging, I apologize to any parents, I would ask that you call me personally and let me know if there's a situation that I can address. We encourage people with mask breaks. We encourage people to do that. It's been very, very difficult to manage the different guidance as it, as it comes along. So obviously, like, number one is always safety. We maybe have done a lot of safety things moving forward, but I, I think that we continue to try to do our best for children and every one of our decisions and looking to the people that are, that are there to guide us at the same time. So I think I got the timeline. I can't guarantee there wouldn't be more guidance tonight at eight o'clock. There actually was a little bit more guidance that the New York State Education Department did not update. Not the State Education Department, the Department of Health sent out new guidance saying that you can wear a mask outside. They did not update that you can forego masks inside. So it's, it's very cumbersome. It's very challenging. Every week, we meet with the, the local Department of Health and they've been very supportive. And I can go on right to my second thing is end of the year activities. We are going to be meeting with the local Department of Health to talk to them about our graduation, our different activities, because now the mask mandate is not necessary outside. What does that look like for the amount of stu- people we can have outside then? And then what does that impact on graduation or activities outside? So it's been very challenging, but I do appreciate your patience with this. And so the end of the year activities, as we move forward, we have great things happening in all of our buildings. Graduation, we have prom this weekend with Dutchess County Fairgrounds. We have students that will be dancing and celebrating, so that we're really excited for that. We have moving up ceremonies in each of the buildings and of course, our graduation as we move forward. And we have post-prom this coming weekend as well, so we're happy that the students were able to have those, those events in place. So a couple of other things. We have a ribbon cutting ceremony for our Performing Arts Center coming up at the July, June 23rd, is it?
23rd.
23rd. Prior to our next board meeting, we're going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony so that people can come in and see the new Performing Arts Center. And we will then hold our board meeting in the auditorium space so that people are able to see the great work that has gone on to put that in place. And we also will thank all the different community members and foundations and all the construction workers and all the people that have gone in to really make that a beautiful space. We did have a play in there, so that was great to see. We're looking forward to see some amazing things occurring during that time. So we will be asking different people to come and of course, the board will be part of that as well. Any questions about masks or the ribbon cutting?
I just that we, we.
Again, I'm just gonna speak too. Is there, is there going to be any update to the public from, again, because this is cumbersome, from Elena? again, because this is cumbersome from a legal standpoint? Will there be any updates provided?
So I guess, I mean, I think what people need to hear is that we are being legally advised, which we are. There is a, I think there's an idea out there that we as a district can overstep guidance. We haven't done that once because we can't. Right? I mean, it's that simple. No, we're not, it's not a back and forth. It's, we're just, this is the board having discussion with Janet.
Correct.
Correct. Right? And, and, you know, this has been every decision along the way. We've been told from the very beginning, pay attention to the science. Everyone in this room knows, excuse me, this is our conversation as a board. Everyone in this room.
No, you're our board.
You know, but this is a meeting of the board.
This is a meeting for people to struggle.
It's not a public, it is a meeting, it's a public meeting. It is not a meeting of the public, ma'am. It's not a meeting of the public. There's a big disconnect. This is our time to have a conversation. There's a visitor recognition. I encourage you to come up in a little bit. We're having a conversation right now. We cannot be interrupted. This is the first time we're in person, so we're going to have that conversation. Thank you. I'm just saying that, you know, I just need to state that there's a disconnect with, you know, our ability to jump guidance and we simply cannot. And we share that frustration. We have our own children. Nope. Please wait for public comment. Would anyone else on the board like to make a comment?
Excuse me, she, excuse me. The superintendent just asked if anyone had any statements to make related to masks.
She's, she's talking to the board, ma'am. She's speaking to the board.
Superin, okay. Or is she speaking to the board?
She is speaking to the board. This is, she is speaking to the board.
I think it's really hard for the public to sit there and to be on Zoom and know that this is the meeting, the business meeting of the board. And the public is allowed two times in which they can participate in public commentary. And, but this is our business meeting. And so we have to be respectful of our rules. And so when we say you are out of order, you just have to wait to turn and that everybody politely will be able to say their piece. But in the meantime, Superintendent Board needs to be able to communicate her thoughts to us as a board and we can give her commentary and guidance as well. And I think we have to follow her recommendations and follow the mask mandate. And it's not a mandate.
That's the point that I'm making. You guys, excuse me, you are out of order. You did. I'm sorry, ma'am. You have to be respectful. We're trying to be respectful up here.
So I just think that there can be discourse, but we have to work together and we have the safety of our kids and no one would put anyone in harm's way. And so I just think that we have to understand what these folks have to do every single day and allow us the conversation. Thank you.
Sorry to disrupt your animal chamber.
Okay, I have the district leadership team update. So we really had a wonderful meeting this week talking about moving forward with that group. All year, we've been talking about vision, mission, goals, graduate profile, moving forward. And I do have some people that were able to participate that were also here in the audience and our administrative team as well. So I think we have a PowerPoint that we want to discuss with the board. So we're going to do that. Have you had that one?
Which one?
That one. They have other strategic plans.
Strategic plan.
It's going to be a little challenging. Okay, so we call this the district level team, which is basically all the stakeholders that represent people in the district working together to talk about what we would like to see the district in the next three to five years. Really intentionally planning things around our educational system, mental health. And then we will go into our stimulus presentation, which really talks about the funding that we're beginning with CHRSA and ARP around the aid that we're getting through the stimulus package. So the first slide talks about our goals for this year. We're to create a mission. Mission meaning our purpose, why we exist. Our vision is where we want to be in the near future and moving three to five years from now. Also, a profile of the graduate. We have wonderful academics available in our school district, but what are some other skills we would like to see our graduates graduate when they leave Red Hook? And then we created goals. So I'd like to propose those goals to the board tonight and have a discussion about it. So you can go to the third slide. So again, just our mission is our purpose and our vision is where we want to be. So as we move forward, these are the two statements that we have decided to put forth in front of the board. Moving forward, that Red Hook Central School District is a welcoming and diverse community of learners committed to personal growth and caring for others. And then vision is Red Hook Central School District seeks to empower each individual to embrace today and navigate the possibilities of tomorrow.
Excuse me, Janet, did you want this slide to be more than?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I just assumed it's happening. Sorry. So these are, I will say it again. These are our mission and our vision statement. So again, the mission statement I just read through. I'll give you a chance to take a look at it. And then our vision statement is where we want to be in the future. So next slide. So when we think about a graduate working together as a K-12 organization, we talk about what are the attributes we want our students to be able to demonstrate when they leave here? So this would be a gradual process of working with all of our teachers and staff members to make sure that our students are striving to demonstrate empathy and compassion. This one's really important, think critically and problem solve. It's okay not to agree. So teaching students to have productive discourse and really think critically and problem solve, to collaborate and communicate, to engage in local and global civics. So that includes voting, that includes understanding the world around us, not only on a local level, but a global level and how do you engage with your community? Creation and innovation came up a lot, that we want to create places where students can create and innovate. So when we look at our opportunities that we're giving to students, is there part of the day where they're able to do that? Or is it mostly restricted to not be able to do that? We want people to embrace diverse, obviously, not only diversity in the way people look, but also the way people think. And challenge inequities. And this came up as really important. Not only tend to our physical, but also our emotional health. So that's really important that we have people that leave here, that, students that leave here and understand the real importance of being able to do that. So this would be something that we all strive for and our programs are based off of this. Our decisions are based off of this. And we really feel that when we look at 21st century skills and the workforce and things that are, they're moving at such a rapid pace for our students, our little four-year-olds that are here every, every day, what would the world look like for them? So what will they need to be able to navigate moving forward? So we believe that these are things that are going to be really important when people can communicate and work together and have problems solved together and really be able to think critically through things. We believe that these are really important attributes for students who graduate here. So the next one is, so how do we get there? So our thought process is what we, I discussed earlier, that idea of coherence, where you have this mission and you have this vision statement. And then you have goals that the whole district are working on. And then developmentally, each of the principals with their building teams take these goals and align them with what works for each of those grades. So of course, the first one is the most important. Obviously, we have curriculum that is relevant, coordinated with an interdisciplinary approach. We, again, going back to that, we have practices that encourage communication, creativity, critical thinking, collaboration. One of the things that's really important too is student voice. How do students feel about school? And inquiry-based learning, where students are more at the center of what's happening in the classroom and problem solving and things of the nature. Perhaps you've heard of project-based learning and things of that nature. And also meaningful technology. So where does technology fit in that is meaningful? And also in a socially responsible way? Next goals is communication. So this would be something that we're looking to improve, that our communication is clear, concise, respectful of all different audiences and accessible to different people that maybe need a different language or a different way for us to communicate. Also, that we would be open to multiple perspectives, encourage respectful dialogue with the community. And then equity, diversity, inclusivity. We would love to challenge bias, beliefs and assumptions to make sure that all of our students feel comfortable in school. We would look at our curriculum to see if it's inclusive and seek student input on it as well. That is something that is pretty new to schools too, have students actually look at the curriculum or look at our instructional practices. They are our customers. They are the ones that are receiving this on a daily basis and how do they feel about school? And we want to have a learning environment that is responsive, like I said before, affirming and equitable. Social, emotional, we want students to recognize their self-worth and support the others, others' development of their self-worth. And we would like to prioritize that we are developing healthy and positive relationships for students, families and colleagues. So those are hefty goals. Those are, some of them are written like three to five years. But we're really looking to create a shift where we're all working together and really looking forward to what we would want our graduates to graduate with. And we believe that this plan is something that will set the tone and help all of our, our whole organization working towards one common thing. So, am I on slide 10?
Yes.
Okay. So right now, I'm looking to get feedback from the board. We continue to review this at our administrative level. The district level team will then bring this information back to the building level teams to have them have some input as well, come back to see if there's any revisions that we need to have. And then we would like to adopt them as district goals. And I would ask that the board, if they would be interested to align their goals with this as well. And then we'll be doing a lot of work about aligning building goals to these goals as well, so that it is coordinated throughout the district. So we have a coordinated effort for doing this. So just the last slide, I think it's really important that it be intentionally planned. As we move forward, we have a great opportunity. This is a wonderful district that I believe that we can be very progressive with some of the things that we're working on and doing in our classrooms. And I look forward to putting this plan in place. Anybody have any questions?
I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated on the DLT. It's a, for those who aren't aware, it's a district leadership partner team that has parents, teachers, support staff, students. And it was two days of great dialogue and, and, you know, back and forth. And we came up with some good goals. And, but I just liked the fact that we were in person. We got to read one another's body language, you know, and passion and excitement. And we had two students who really gave it their all. And it was great hearing from them and what they want to see in terms of their education. So, and Janet's leadership was stellar. So thank you for being the helm and keeping us navigated on those slippery slopes that we could easily derail ourselves. But it was, it was good work. And it kind of gives you that little shot in the arm, you know, to say we're ready for a new year and new things. Got a lot of work?
Yep. I just got, Maggie just reached out to say, please, everyone lean in so they can hear you better. But, I think, well, everybody, apparently except me. No, I appreciate all the hard work. I'm excited about this work. I think, you know, Jen and I joke a lot that we can't wait to actually really start the work that we hired Janet to do. So I think the goals are great. I think the work and effort put forth. And I do believe the board, through our work this summer, will align our goals and then add in, you know, fiscal responsibility, facilities and a couple other areas that we need to, that we need to affirm as a board. So I'm supportive of your efforts as well.
Yeah, many thanks to all of the DLT members. And for those who don't know, the district level team where DLT is made up of community members, students, teachers, administrators, board members. It really is an eclectic group. I think they've done a great job. And I echo what Kate said. You know, maybe just needs to add a few things, especially about how to do all this wonderful work in a fiscal, fiscally manageable way and things like that. But tremendous amount of work and many thanks.
I just want to remind us, actually, you helped me remember this, that we do, we do have two students who have been a part of these, developing these goals and missions. And I think we need to circle back to them and maybe even a larger group of students and hear their feedback on these as well. I know we're planning to do that. It would be nice to hear if we have any thoughts.
Yeah, I think Mr. McKeonan and I know Mrs. Smith, the plan on, you know, doing that. We can talk to Mrs. Hayes, Ken, as well.
Yes, sir.
Ken, I just wanted to make mention too, our past mission statement was very long. It was two sentences, but it just seemed like it was a whole paragraph of, what was that? And so we thought that maybe one sentence kind of shortened group of thoughts, put together. People would remember it. Students would be able to recite it and work with it. And so it was clear and concise and well massaged in its wording. So, you know, from someone who's been here for a long time, I welcome the change.
Okay, great. So we will move forward with that. And then our next presentation is to talk about the aid that we're going to be receiving. And we have met as a administrative team, then moved on and brought these to the building level teams to have conversations about how we plan on using the money moving forward. The money is not a renewable. It is one-time money. So we had, that was really something that we had to think about, the sustainability of it. And so being really intentional about what would be things that could improve. There was also restrictions. They focused on academics, working with intervention services, and also things around PPE, but also upgrading facilities that would help facilities be kept open if this situation continued. So I'm going to turn it over to Bruce. He's just going to give a quick overview on each one. And then we're going to go through and talk about the itemized costs in different areas.
So as you can see on the slide that's behind me, the money that is coming our way is coming in two broad pools. There is the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, which we are fondly abbreviating as CHRSA. That money was passed through Washington under the Trump administration in December of 2020. And it points in, it was, it was in the vicinity of $2 trillion nationwide. But it boils down to $1,674,869 headed toward Red Hook Central School District. That is then subdivided into two pools of money, one referred to as ESSER and the other one referred to as GEAR. So as we go to apply, we have to, we have to break that out into two separate pools. That money has an application due date that comes up next week, although that could be extended by request of the district. Our goal is to submit an application for these funds and get them committed to the district, even if it turns out that we're going to amend our plans later. So at the moment, we are on target to submit an application, which we will detail a little bit this evening. And that application will go in by June 15th of 2021. We are obligated to spend those funds. As Janet mentioned, it's one-time funding, but it is also multi-year funding. not meaning that we get $1.7 million in each of the years, but in total, though, just under $1.7 million. And we can spread our spending of that out through September of 2023. The second pool of money came from a stimulus that was passed out of Washington in March under the Biden administration. It's referred to as the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, or ARB. It was $2 trillion nationwide, but for Red Hook, it seems to be pointing $1,661,605 in our direction. There is no application deadline or application or application process defined yet, although we're assuming it will be very similar to the CRISA application that we are currently almost completed with. Those funds may be spent over multiple years as well. We can spend those funds out through September of 2024.
We should just quickly thank Bruce for his tireless work on getting those applications together, which I understand are complex and not, that it take a lot of time. So thank you, Bruce.
Thank you. Not, not done all alone, though. There was a lot of work from a lot of administration in pulling that together. The application process is really sort of sorting and sifting and categorizing. And while it takes a bit of time, it's not all that complex. But thank you.
Do not say yourself. Sure, Bruce, I know. Just say thank you.
Okay, so. So we're going to do, this is just a broad overview, and then we're going to go to each area. So we've decided to focus on upgrading some of our facilities. So we'll talk a little bit about that with HVAC work that we currently have adding additional. We're going to talk a little bit about our kitchens, upgrading them. Then we're going to be talking about professional development, adding programming for our students, and then adding programs for social and emotional wellness. So we'll go to the next slide. And Bruce is going to talk about the facilities upgrades.
So right now, we have four different facilities projects built into our application. These are very initial estimates with regard to the cost. But again, we are aiming to fully apply and get committed for Red Hook Central School District and approved application and get funds heading in our direction, even if we decide to make modifications to these plans as we move forward. So right now, those four facilities-like plans total just over a million, almost $1.1 million, at $1,090,000. And there are four essential projects. So there's HVAC, Heating, Ventilating, Air Conditioning Project, related to the high school and middle school. And that is a project that involves, that is a project that involves implementing digital controls on a classroom-by-classroom basis. So the nice thing about this project is it really is a unit price per classroom, and we will do as many classrooms as we can. These digital controls. Oh, okay. Is this, this is better? Those digital controls will enable us to better control the heating, ventilating, air conditioning system throughout those buildings from a central computer station. And it will help us to improve and maximize the way that the air flows. So that's one of the projects that we will be applying for. We're actually doing some of that work right now to the tune of $100,000 with our annual capital appropriations outweigh project. The second thing that we've applied for in the CRISA funding under the, under the facilities-type category is some kitchen upgrades. What we're looking at doing is improving our serving lines in all five of our cafeterias. What this will mean is more efficiency, cleaner, easier to clean and sanitize. And that will hopefully be in place in our five different serving lines. Air conditioning work here in the Mill Road Intermediate and Mill Road Primary Schools. That, that work, again, is on a unit price-per-room basis. So we have unit ventilators in each of the rooms that either have been or in the future can still be modified to accept air conditioning units into them, then supported by condensers that are outside or on the roof. So we will aim to do a number of additional classrooms in this building, both on the primary side and the intermediate side with those monies. And then there is a ventilation process, project at the Linden Avenue Middle School Library that would both improve the airflow as well as add air conditioning to the mix. The middle school library is the only library in the district that is currently not air-conditioned. So not only would we be updating and improving the ventilation and airflow in that building, but adding air conditioning to that space.
Okay, so under the umbrella of professional development and curriculum, we're looking to do multiple projects, one of them being professional learning communities. This is targeted to our 6th through 12 community. And professional learning community is research-based, the four and the four. It's an approach for teachers and administrators to brainstorm and discuss areas of concern and solve and reflect on educational issues. This is really a continuous cycle, so that we're always looking to grow. Under the next one, AP and IB training. That, again, is focused on secondary, 9th through 12. We, it's for advanced placement and international baccalaureate trainings for more teachers to be available to teach these courses. The next area certainly falls under our goals is curriculum mapping software. This will be a team of teachers and administrators to research the best platform for supporting curricular mapping. And we will begin with our secondary English department. Reading Fast Forward, that is also research-based. It's a response-to-intervention approach. It is to help students to support their literacy, foundational skill development. And this has been, there's certainly white paper on that, and it is a research-based approach. The next area is we are looking to have two math coaches for our K through 5 teaching team. This is again RTI approach. And we're looking to professionally develop teachers in the area of mathematics and to have shared teaching experience for our team at the elementary level. The last bit is summer 2021 programming. We are looking just for a bit of this money for the grades K through 12 summer support that we're giving to our students.
Kitty, can you comment quickly on how many kids do we have signed up for summer support so far? You don't know?
I don't know at this time. I do know how many are signed up for summer academy.
Oh, good. How many?
148.
Excellent, that's great.
170.
Wow, cool. Excellent, that's great. Thank you, sorry.
Okay, next slide. Talking about social and emotional wellness. We're looking at restorative practices in the district, and that will be the years of training going into that. So this is like over a course of numerous years. We talked about, I don't know exactly what Jack called them, but I call them more like sensory rooms. He called them chill-out rooms or things like that. Places that we can, you know, have for students to decompress or have, be able to speak to people outside of also a counselor's office. We talked about flexible seating. A lot of our students, as all of us probably do, have a hard time sitting still for long periods of time. So we're looking at purchasing standing desks or alternative tables or seating arrangements that can be flexible in a classroom to encourage movement. That is really important as we move forward, that our students are able to move. When we go back to one of our graduate profiles that we're looking at, it's to tend to physical and mental health. And it's really hard for students to sit for long periods of time. So we're definitely looking to slowly move that into all, you know, our classrooms throughout the district. But that is, that is what we're looking towards for 21st century classrooms. So we thought this would be a great way to do that as well, because we know that students do well standing during class, and that's okay. And also being able to collaborate and move around in classrooms. That's our typical desk that we can remember probably when we were in school. They were not meant to sit with other people. But if that's one of our goals, too, is to increase that, we want to be able to have teachers the ability to separate what necessary, but also move students around and be able to have that. So that's really important for us, that idea of sensory. We do have those classrooms now for students who just kind of need to do a couple push-ups or kind of need to move around and do what needs to be done. And I think it's important to teach students how to self-regulate. And those are skills that we want people to leave with. If I'm experiencing any anxiety or I need some time, what are different ways that I can do that in a healthy manner? So we're excited and looking forward with that. And then the next is the other funding that Bruce is going to go through. This is still a little bit, we have not received, just let everybody know that we received this and there was like a date, like maybe a week later to cut down this one. We're a little bit unsure. We know the amount, but they have not given us the timeline of the application at this point.
Right, so what you see there is the remaining list of priorities that we have and projects that we would like to accomplish with approximated prices. So there are, again, a number of facilities items. I failed to mention before, the facilities come with some additional hoops to jump through. So the State Education Department Office of Facilities Planning would necessarily be involved. There are permitting office. So we would have to coordinate with them before moving forward with most of these facility-like projects. But there is some additional swipe card access at the middle school that we would like to accomplish. This will help facilitate kids getting outdoors more for class and then the teachers having easy access back into the building after they've gone outdoors. Restroom upgrades throughout the district. That will help with sanitation and is part of why that qualifies. Paved walkways outdoors in this building, that's going to help with access to outdoor learning spaces. And then we've heard from each of our building principals that they would love to create a more official outdoor learning classroom on each of our campuses. We're not quite sure what that looks like, but probably sort of a pavilion-like building that, that teachers and kids could access during the day as an outdoor learning space. There are some additional professional development curriculum-type projects, so project-based learning, K through 12. Kitty, Dr. Summers talked about the instructional coaches, which were funded in the CRISA grant for year one. It's likely that we would like to continue them into a second year, although we do realize that this money is finite and that we would phase these out after that second year. But hopefully, we can fit the instructional coaches for grades K through 5 in for a second year under the ARPA funding. So those items totaled to $1,495, and I don't remember the exact number on the front slide, but it was a million six-something. So that leaves the $166,605 currently unallocated, but, but, but ready to be allocated for unanticipated costs. 673 districts statewide start doing facilities-like projects. We are sure that the price tag on those projects will increase. So there is some, some unallocated funding yet as we await the ARPA funding application to come out. And I missed the, oh my goodness, Stacy's sitting right in the room, and this is her project. I missed the playground at the Linden Ave Middle School. So under the social and emotional wellness category, we would be looking to put in place something there for the students to use on recess and maybe even as classroom kinds of activities.
Yeah, just really, just to kind of go back really quick, the paved walkway, we talked about that as, you know, really physical wellness as well, because it would be a path that the students, first of all, it would be ADA compliant for any student that was in a wheelchair to be able to have access to different parts of the backfield that they currently would not be able to now in down to the garden area. And we also envision that, maybe they don't know this yet, but to plow that, so that people can have students walk out through there in all seasons, you know, to get out in the snow or get out in the different weather. And also the community to use that or the teachers or staff to use that during their time just as well to, to focus on that physical and mental health. The playground at Lambs is absolutely amazing. I think that we need to not underestimate the importance of play, even in middle school. And those students do not have that, that ability to have access to that moving course. So they often go outside and roam. So that's something that we want to, you know, talk about moving forward is that, you know, continue to play. You learn a lot during those, those times. But, you know, it's not going to look like the same as it's going to look over here. So that will also be a transition. So we're happy to see the, you know, thinking a little bit outside the box about traditional things and really moving to say, also highlighting the project-based learning and what we discussed before, which is more like student-centered inquiry-based moving forward. So we sent this to the board to see if they have any questions or suggestions. We are still having building-level teams, still having discussions about this work as well. We will also post it on the website for parents to be able to see as well. So if the board has any comments or questions or suggestions.
Thank you to everyone for all of their work on this. Sounds like a tremendous amount of time and effort has been put in. I would appreciate being sent this live presentation or at least being guided as to where we can find it so we can go over it a little bit more. But especially when Bruce was talking about the ventilation and the airflow, I'm really glad that we're able to have this opportunity to work on that, all of the educational things that we'll be able to do with this, the social, emotional. I think it's really going to pave the way for our students to have a successful re-entry in the fall. So thank you.
Just to note, too, all this is not going to happen by September first. Okay. Just literally, I think what Bruce said before, I think we're going to, we're going to be in a little bit of a struggle with every school district having these funds, too, and looking at similar things. So we're hopeful that we do have some current vendors for like the HVAC, but some of the other work, this is over a course of a couple of years to be able to do this. The professional development, obviously, would be something that we would be able to move a little bit quicker. But Stacy has probably a date already, so.
Understood, understood.
And they haven't told us exactly how they're going to release this fund to us either. So that's another thing that people don't always understand is these funds are just not released to us. So that's, that's something that we're waiting to hear about, how that's going to hopefully happen.
More like reimbursed to us, you think?
Yes, this is, this is going to be accounted for in what we call the special aid fund. And these projects are typically paid, reimbursed after we've made expenditures. So in a typical federal fund, special aid fund project, we would get 20% of the funding upfront. And then as we incurred the expenditures and could, and could document them, we can apply for reimbursement. Typically, these would be things like Title I, Title II, the IDEA grants, which are in substantially smaller dollar amounts than this. So one of the challenges here will be cash flowing this, especially if the state turns out to be a little slow on reimbursement.
I just, I know this is off topic and it just came in my head, so I apologize. I think there was someone earlier that talked about technology. We're going to be using the Smart Bond. I know it's kind of confusing when we talk about things that are in our budget and then in this and then in the Smart Bond, that we're going to look to have all the students at the high school have a device.
Jen, the Smart Bond was created how many years ago? It's, it's technology-specific.
I don't remember. Three or four years ago, that was created. The Red Hook pool was just over $1.3 million. We have, in the vicinity of $900,000 still unallocated.
Great.
There's certainly a lot to take in here with all of this. And it sounds like so amazing upgrades that we have in mind. The one thing I was going to just say is in terms of outdoor learning classroom and, and the playground at Lambs is an amazing idea. It sounds like with that, we might need a little more recess time, too, to spend, spend more time out there. I would just maybe suggest if we could look at also putting some of that towards our natural spaces on our campuses here, the gardens. If there's any way to sort of direct some funds towards enhancing our gardens or anything that would help the longevity of our purpose. I know it's one-time money, but maybe we can do that as well.
Good idea, good idea.
We're all okay, yeah?
I'm good.
Good?
Good.
Yeah?
I'm good.
All right. And then lastly, I'm just going to have Dr. Summers just do a little bit of update on teaching and learning.
Okay, thank you. So in general, I'd like to do a shout out to our teachers and administrative team. They've worked very hard this year. A special congratulations to our teachers being granted tenure tonight. That is a four-year journey that is not taken lightly in this district. And as Johanna spoke of their portfolios, certainly a very large individual presentation of that journey. So it's very heartfelt when teachers apply their skillset to making sure that we understand that journey. So many thanks to that team. I continue to have end of year meetings with teacher leaders and department chairs. And those discussions are really focused on how the past year went, how students are doing, and looking forward to setting goals for the fall. So we are continuously reflective about our educational programming and certainly the input from administrators and teachers is highly valued. In the area of personnel, we continue to work on staffing for summer school in the fall. That again, is a process that is taken very seriously in this district and we look to get the very best teaching staff that we can find. So that's a process that's continuous and certainly involves administrators and teachers. Today I sent out a memo giving teachers the opportunity to plan for some summer curriculum projects. These are team of teachers that come together to be reflective about what they teach, how they teach, and to design new curriculum projects that would be implemented across courses or across grade levels. And that is a, includes data, includes how they will show evidence of impact. And so that will be summer work for our teaching staff. And just a reminder, Summer Academy enrollment is still open. You can go to our website and look to enroll through Family ID. And our number is up to.
One seventy-eight.
One seventy-eight. So we're very excited about that. That's an opportunity for our students, rising eighth graders to graduate and seniors to look at investigating and exploring areas of perhaps an interest, a passion, or something new. It's a multi-age grouping and we have found, this will be our fourth year, and we have found that students embrace that opportunity and really come out of it. Because we do survey students, we survey teachers, and we survey parents. And the feedback has been very, very positive. And that is grant funded. So we look forward to ending our school year in a very positive, engaged, and empowering note. And many thanks to our wonderful students in this district. So that's my update.
Thank you. Hey, any questions for Dr. Summers?
I have one. I got this thing from Brian Fessler from NISBA and it was about APPR not being required in 2021. Can you address that a little bit more?
Very little because it just came out this afternoon and I, something came through that said that APPR was at a standstill and that there's still some legislation pending. So we're waiting, waiting for a final decision on that. And I will share with you though, that our administrative team, including district level administrators, have gone through the process of observations. So we will look for a final ruling on that. So that's still, from last year, we did not submit data on our APPR because we were not required to. So we'll see how this ends up. We should hopefully have an answer in a week.
Yeah, and Johanna, going back to something, I think you brought up maybe like a week, maybe the last meeting was the SEAL of civics. Dr. Summers and I have spoken to the social studies department and started to think about what that perhaps could look like for our graduates that maybe have completed something above and beyond, you know, going back to our graduate profile, we want students to be civically engaged. So what would that project look like and how would a student receive that? Or would be an aspiration for all our students to receive something like that? And how would that look? We also, yesterday I spoke to the department chair about the seal of by literacy, which I think is an absolutely wonderful thing for a graduate to have, to prove that they have a proficiency in another language where they have to put on a presentation in front of a panel and do some pretty extensive work. So it's also another accreditation that a student would be able to aspire to upon graduation. So those are things that I know that you had brought up, the civic engagement. I just reminded things, so I just wanted to follow up.
Thanks. It's great. Those sound a little bit mandate civics. Yeah, absolutely. Just quickly, before we move on from this agenda item, when Janet was talking about the theater auditorium ribbon cutting, I'm realizing that the 23rd of June is our last meeting before the board vote. So I'm hoping that at that meeting, we can do the meet the candidates section. And I'm also hoping that this same setup or something similar, so that we can have the Zoom participation in a meaningful way will also be able to be done if the meeting is in the auditorium. But I do think that having that meet the candidate opportunity is probably even more important now than the last time because I don't know that there'll be other opportunities like there were for the last election, just because of the time, the timing.
I know that Elena and John were over at the auditorium talking, they obviously have a sound system, but how does that work with the sound system that we need? So I know that they're working on that and they have some, I believe some close to resolution. So I think it'll be exciting, it'll be exciting to have our meetings in that beautiful space.
Great, thank you. And if we can just, yeah, make sure that that information gets out and how to access that both in person and remotely. I've seen the in-person stuff already, you know, them announcing about it. And yeah, just to make sure that the candidates know that that's an opportunity to get the community to hear them.
Yeah, I don't think we'll do the ribbon cutting remotely because I think that would be part of it would be outside. So we would.
Yeah.
The meeting.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, I was only speaking about the board meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Janet. And Elena and John.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, everyone. Great information. Agenda item number nine for the board, administrative reports. Any questions or comments?
I'm hoping before the end of the school year, so maybe at the next, you know, I'm not sure if Perry could do it for the next board meeting, but just wondering about the solar project and getting an update about that. Want to thank everybody for their reports and maybe have Tom, Tom Casada's report for the next meeting as well because that, at least I didn't see it in the packet.
Yeah.
Perry and I can put together a more formal presentation on the status of the solar project. It is still out there, it is still moving forward, but very slowly because as, as time has gone by, some of the structure of that has changed a little bit. So we continue to work on that and we can, we can pull something together for the next time if you'd like.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it just, you know, to, yeah, kind of just get an update on where we are. It's such an important and big project. I'd appreciate that, just you know, before the end of the school year. Thank you so much, Bruce.
Yeah, and just another thing, thinking about along that line is the capital project committee. I know that we've put that, that off this year, something that is supposed to happen. Elena never heard of us, but.
I think we, I think in the spring, we pushed it off to the fall.
Correct. So I think we want to, we want to start getting that back and seeing what are some projects that we want to continue to work on in the district through that process.
Especially if the other monies are going in.
Right.
People are looking at.
Right. Yeah. Some of that was, I don't know.
My sense is, and you'd have to get this from Perry, my sense is there might be a little bit of overlap of what we talked about tonight into what would have been that project that was envisioned a year ago and that we've been talking about. But much of that project would still be in need of being done, even if we accomplish all of these things through the stimulus money.
All right. Thank you to the administrators for submitting their reports. Okay, we're come, we're up to Jen, item number 10, our second recognition of visitors. So again, inviting those in person to the microphone. If you would like to make a comment via Zoom, if you could just send it in the chat so we know you're teed up. I would also like to ask, if possible, on Zoom for the individual speaking to turn on their camera because we can't really see who, who's speaking to us. And again, introduce yourself, please keep your comments to three minutes. And I welcome any visitors at this time. Yes.
Hi, I am Christina Savelli. I have a five-year-old kindergarten nurse who is the cutest thing in the world. So this is a perfect example of talking tonight at the end of the meeting. This is like a survey. I've seen people take water breaks. I've seen people play with their masks because it's very uncomfortable. And it's warm in here, just got cold because, you know, the sun went down. But we're grown adults and we're struggling with this, sitting here for two hours. So my child is one of the eight to 20% of the students that get full day. So they're in the class, or he's in the classroom for seven hours. That is amazing, by the way. His teachers have told me that he greatly improved his behavior in seven hours. You guys might be looking at papers and documents from the above that, you know, tell you what to do. But I'm on the ground. I have children, you, some of you have children, some of you don't. But I'm here because I see a friend. I wrote email saying that my kid is not okay with wearing the masks for seven hours. And there's only eight to 20% of them going full day. Now, Tanya is telling me that her kid has not had a mask break for, for water breaks. And I'm not attacking the teachers. It's probably hard to try to say a lesson in two hours. And my kid is there for all day. So, and he tells me, he got a lot of mask breaks when the email came out. Didn't have many mask breaks today. Noah texted on the teachers are busy. But you know, I think the energy is in the wrong direction. Us parents are saying no masks for our kids, limit mask breaks, whatever, fighting for them because my kid does come tired. He's red in the face, especially at 12 o'clock. He runs around and then he immediately has to put his mask on while still trying to catch his breath in class after recess or lunch. And so therefore it's enough. Studies, if you want to do medical studies, shows that the kids are the least. And you had three hour workshop on keeping kids safe right now. My kid is not okay with a mask for seven hours. We are struggling two hours. We had drinks, we're waving, we're like, this is hot. We have to open our eyes and put effort into what we see. So the effort I saw when I dropped my kid off in the morning is like, put your mask on, put your mask on, put your mask on, put your mask on. And then you have two people supervising it, like are these parents dropping these kids off with masks? And they're being, put the mask on, put the mask on. Like that, or what are we, this is, this is exhausting. So, and my other thing is that my kid is OTPT in speech and he's, and there's, my next door neighbor has two girls, they're, one's behind in reading, one's behind in math, they're only there for two hours, but my kid's allowed to go there for seven hours. We all need equal education and that is not equal education when they requested full days and they're not getting it because that was determined that they didn't need it, but they're behind in two areas. So we need to be full day. And we're going to fight today because I don't want any excuses when it comes summer and in August, oh, we're only going to do AM and PM and we're only going to do four days. No, enough is enough. All students need to be full day and they need to not wear these masks. And if, and there can be remote for the people who really feel that their safety from COVID, they have that, they can have that choice. Eighty percent of parents wanted to go full, full time, but we were not being listened to. I don't know how we can beat this dead horse. Anyway, second off, I really want to see the curriculum of this equity because you have to realize, we have a lot of police families here, troopers, Poughkeepsie police officers, RFA police officers. I want to see the curriculum that you're going to teach our children about police officers because you're going to offend a lot of people. So I, curriculum, the equity, equity, whatever it is, we need more. We use, you use a lot of terms and stuff. A lot of us don't know about them or, so we would like to see what you're going to teach our kids black and white, not what you're going to teach them in school and then give us some, some wordy curriculum that this is what we're teaching them. We want to see what you're going to be teaching them because I don't like it and a lot of parents don't. We want to see what you are doing. And that's all I have right now. But please look, put your effort into the children. They're hot, they're, they're, we can't breathe, they don't get water breaks and, and fight for us. Tell them, no, this is what I see. I see you, you're watching the kids get off, or out of this cars and stuff and, and they're, they're being told to put their mask on, put their mask on. They don't want the mask on. It's restricting, they can't breathe, they're hot, they're thirsty, they don't get mask breaks if it rains or they, they can, it's just, it's over, it's ridiculous. You see them, you see them in the classrooms struggling. Ask the teachers, do the, go into the classrooms, look at them and then say no to the upper people, say no, this is what I see. The kids are not doing well for seven hours with this mask is on and we're struggling to wear it for two hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Christina.
And choice, choice. If parents want to keep their kids with a mask, that's fine, but if they don't, choice, parent choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
And dinner. I'm going to put my kids to bed.
Okay. Do we have any other speakers either via Zoom or in person?
I would just, I, 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 I ask it, are we going to hear any commentating regarding the masks from the board?
Can I, can, can you please reintroduce yourself? I just want to make sure I'm.
Sorry, sorry about that. I had it on you. Nicole Ha.
What is your statement?
I said, I just asked if the board was going to provide any commentation regarding the masks. I know the board has commented, I'm sorry, on most major topics that have come up. So I was just wondering if we, the public, could hear the comments and sentiments from the board as it relates to some of the emotional concerns that have been expressed by parents.
I felt like we talked about it when Janet spoke for the superintendent's piece. I don't know if anyone on the board has any further comments?
I already did comment about masks.
Yeah, I feel like I did as well.
I commented too. I'm not going to keep repeating myself.
Any other public comments? Okay, we have someone in person.
Hi. Quickly, I just wanted to say.
Who are you?
Julia Rolfe. Hi.
Hi, Julia.
Hi. Just a couple of quick things. One is I'm glad to see that Nancy Keeney got a congrats balloon because you should know that I actually ended up moving to this district from Woodstock because on the very first day, my daughter was poured around the school. The very first teacher she met was Nancy Keeney. And it was like this whirlwind of excitement and energy because she was like, she walked in and she's nervous and she's just wandering. And she's like, okay, you're starting, you're going to be starting, I'm going to go here, take this, take this. And she like loaded her up with these books. I don't know if you remember this. And so I drove her, walked down, my daughter walked down and she was like, this is the school for me. This is the greatest thing ever. So she was so, I'm glad you got a congrats balloon. And I did want to say just that I have been, we were thrilled to be moved to this district because the teaching is so fantastic. And that's what attracted us to this, to this place. And that continues to be the case. This has been a hard year because my daughter has not been in school as much as she would have liked to be. So when you said we're going full time in the fall, I, I hope that means like really full time and that means every day in a normal day and act regular because it's been very, 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 very challenging, as you know. And it's been heartbreaking. I wanted to say just because I've gotten this sense, and I feel like I may as well say it, which is that parents seem nervous to speak up sometimes. I've been, like they. say it, which is that parents seem nervous to speak up sometimes. I've been, like they speak to each other. And there's some feeling, and I think you know this already, that to go on record in any way that seems critical is very, very intimidating for parents. And I feel like if there's some way to encourage parents' input, if not in this format, because it's a board meeting and it has a certain flow and agenda, and that's fine. But if there's some other way that parents could feel empowered and feel like they could have a back and forth, it might make people feel better. And it's actually part of your communication plan, Jen, to seek that input. And, and I think somehow people need to be encouraged to actually be comfortable because that's, why not have that? And just a side note on the mask thing, once the masks are finally a thing of the past, which is going to probably be sooner rather than later, my daughter has told me that the kids in her ninth-grade class, they're afraid to take off their masks. Like they're giving, the teachers like, if you want to give your presentation with your mask down temporarily, they're like, no. And they're outdoors, like you want to take your mask off, but they like won't take them off. So there's like a whole other learning thing that's going to have to go on, which is teaching kids it's going to be okay to take off your mask. Because kids are now scared because of what's been happening over the past year. Some part of the education is going to be now it's okay and here's the reasons it's okay to take off your mask. That's a whole separate, that's like, you know, when we're finally creating masks. All right, that's it. That's all.
Thank you, Julia. Okay, I think that is it. Thank you, everyone.
Can, can I, can I interject? And that, that was the sentiments, I missed that parent's name, but I think I seconded everything that she said and I think they're all important topics. Is that something that the board would be willing to consider making a motion on to having a, a parent where we could have back and forth dialogue without the intimidation factor of, you know, not speaking out of order and not that there wouldn't be some organization guidelines to the meeting, but with all due respect, this court bus, we've been a little bit, a little bit on the intimidating side in terms of encouraging parents to feel inclined to speak.
I'm, I am going to comment back on a couple of things and I appreciate the feedback. You know, we are, we are elected officials and we take it very seriously. We go through intensive training that teaches us our role as governance and how to manage meetings. I'm going to sound offensive. I don't mean to be. I cannot quite communicate how challenging Zoom has been in many ways. It's been wonderful for participation, but it's been very, very challenging. One of our biggest goals as a district and one of the reasons we hired Janet is to increase communication. Many of our goals and objectives have been sidelined by the consistent challenges that COVID has presented. I think that you will find, and many parents will find, that Janet as an individual, probably more than many leaders I've ever worked with, would invite anyone to come straight in to talk about any topic that they have to the extent that she's available. I think one of her big goals and something that many people participated on, and it was really beneficial, were the Red Hook conversation. That's something that I think in a normal year, we'd love to do four times, six times. Those are dialogues and conversations that really allow administration, teachers, community members to have the back and forth. I can assure you, it is extraordinarily awkward for me to have to appear to be shutting down topics and conversations. But like I said at the beginning, governance and this role is understand that this is a public meeting, but it is not a meeting of the public. And that sounds harsh and I really kind of held back from saying that multiple times. But the truth is, and Johanna said it very eloquently, our job is to hear from the, the community. I assure you, we go home, we, we ruminate, we come together and then we try to present forward recommendations. And what we have experienced a lot this year is the extraordinary frustration. I am a mother of four children in this district, two in the elementary, middle school as well. I can assure you, every parent who spoke, I know exactly what you're talking about. And the position that we are in as elected members, the position we are in as parents, has been extraordinary. I would be very glad to stay after the meeting. I would be happy, Nicole, if you wanted to reach out to me individually and have a conversation about some of the limitations. It's just that there is a disconnect often when, you know, people come onto board meetings, they're, they don't know what to expect. There's a lot of business that needs to happen. We do the best we can. We are not shutting you out. Sometimes I do feel like it might appear that way, but I have to maintain order. I think you've seen some videos of board meetings where people get, you know, we're trying to maintain respect and not cutting one another off. And if that, that came across and anything less than that, I do apologize. It's also just understanding how these meetings work and happen. And I do think that, you know, given in a normal year, we are absolutely committed to interfacing with the public more. I know Janet, that's one of the reasons why we hired you. And I've probably taken up way too much time, but I feel very impassioned about this because we are here today. Every step of the way, there have been challenges. We're trying to face them honestly and openly. We had board movement mid-year. And again, we do care. And, and the kids are our moral imperative. That is where we start. And, and some of the things and decisions we've had to make are not passive. It's not us just saying, well, that's what they said to do and we have to do it. It's a lot more complicated than that. And I assure you, we don't take any of your frustrations lightly. And I really do hope to convey a sense of compassion and empathy for all of us as we move forward. So I probably am totally out of turn, but I.
Yeah, I just, I just want to.
Can I just add one thing, Kate?
Yes.
Prior to COVID, many of the parent organizations in this district struggled with membership and participation, I know on a secondary level. They have representatives to every single committee that is here in this district. And so I implore all of you, as we reopen, it is a new time to join the ranks in the parent groups and make your voice heard as those representatives like on DLT can come back and constructively make your points known to us. And a lot of times, I think people don't go through what we call the chain of command. And there's a path that you take. And a lot of times, people just automatically come to the board that we're the immediate fixers. And I think you go through your teacher, to your principal, to building levels, to the parent organizations, to Dr. Summers, to Mr. Martin, if there's a tax problem. And all of them report back to us so that we can make a formidable decision. And we do take it lightly. And, and we like to hear your voice, but there are other avenues too that you have as your resource to, to make it work for you. So there's strength in numbers. And a lot of times, you know, we talk about advocacy work in the district and that's why it's important for us to be part of a, a school board association to make those legislative changes. And our voice be heard on those levels as well. So there's many areas to have dialogue and it's not just here at us. And we need to work together to make workable solutions.
Thanks, Joe.
All right. So I just want, this court bus, I guess what I've been asking, you know, what I've witnessed tonight, which is a really good thing. It's very evident that the board, which is elected by the people to represent the people in terms of the school, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys have a sense of camaraderie between yourselves. And, and that was evident in, in watching the dialogue. There was some, you know, some laughter over things and, you know, having general conversation. And I'm sure that you agree completely on certain things and then not on others. But this dialogue between the board and the parents is, is of equal importance. Again, I understand that there's order to this specific meeting. But, but the reason that the board exists is to represent, elected by the people to represent the interests of the people by and large. And without having that community engagement, without creating that, and, and also the importance of creating this, this level of camaraderie and openness among parents to, to talk and, and as parents, you know, not talking in a bureaucratic governmental sense, but talking parent to parent is of equal importance. So I guess I am asking for my rate of reasons that the board recognize, you know, that in the current state, what would be the pandemic that we're, you know, coming out of and the emotions and the disconnect that, that has ensued, that the board would support having, I think it is critical, you know, to talk about where we've been, talk about where we're going. And the, the stuff in the middle is, is important. Or how can the board truly feel like you are representing the thoughts, the ideas and the passion and, you know, addressing issues that the people have? Again, it's refreshing to see what we saw tonight. There's definitely a sense of camaraderie and teamwork, collaboration amongst the board. But again, you know, I, I don't, the, the community involvement is critical and parents need to have an outlet to, to feel a sense of connection to the board.
Thank you.
I get that the governmental roles and I get that there's executive sessions, but, you know, we need to have something in between. I don't feel like this probably didn't look much different than an executive session except that you guys had an audience. You know, there wasn't, there wasn't many opportunities for community involvement and collaboration with the board to feel like it is a union, to feel like it is a team. You guys have your role and we have our role and, you know, that those forces align. So is, you know, I'm genuinely asking if there can be some kind of movement from the board to create that, not next year, but now, to start that dialogue now, to start that chatter now that parents are starting to talk about things that, over the summer, as we approach the new year.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any more comments? I mean, I, I think just in summary, I, we are, we are, we, I felt like I addressed, you know, what you were saying in terms of avenues of communication. It's definitely something that we are, we are talking. I, there's, we can't formally make a motion and this is something that we would have to discuss. So we're going to, we are, again, taking it all in the poll and I appreciate your commentary.
And it says PTAs or something. I don't know, you know, we don't know about them. Maybe, sorry, sorry.
No, no, no. No, it's fine. No, it's fine.
So we know that there is a parents coordinator or like, if there is something, I personally don't even know about it. So I would like to know that there's a PTA or a parent group or whatever there is. It doesn't have to be board business. It could be some separate business.
Well, and I think that's what Johanna was saying. There's many, many avenues.
Right. But we don't want to make those public.
I think that, well, they, I think they are public, but I guess, you know, again. I know. It's you, Julia. All right. We do, I do, I, I know, we're going to go to number 11. And again, I don't mean to, I, I can't win.
But I, you know, I, I have to say, because of COVID and the shutdown, I, I mean, PTA and PTSD have been long-established groups. And maybe they took a hiatus because of the pandemic, which is only understandable because of programming and like that. But I know Maggie and I used to go to PS, PTSD and there would probably be without just the officers, maybe one or two parents on a secondary level. That's the middle school and high school. And that was their time to collaborate on things. They always have an educational component. So I'm sure as we open up again, that these avenues will be there for parents to take advantage of. And it's not us to say that you have to do that. You have to take that initiative in order to participate and make the work for you.
Right. Right. Okay. Thank you, Joe. All right. Number 11, first reading of the revisions of new. I would ask everyone on Zoom to mute, please. We hear the comments. Thank you. Again, we're trying to be respectful and I would hope for the same from those on, on Zoom. First reading of, please, can you mute? We need to move forward. First reading of revisions to new policy 4310, superintendents of schools. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, moving on to agenda item number 12, consent agenda. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions for Bruce on any of the items?
I would just remind on, I, we've had a number of significant budget transfers this year. I would remind that there are probably still some more coming at the next meeting and even into the summer as the 2021 school year finalizes.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, agenda item number 13, personnel. I need a motion and a second.
Motion. Second.
I would just like to point out the first resignation of Linley Chandler. She is a beloved teacher in the district. My children were lucky enough to have her. And she will be greatly missed, but I know she's going on to great things. So I'm happy for her. But she is, she is a shining star indeed.
And I would echo that, that she's been a very strong educator and has a tremendous impact on kids. So thank you to her and much success to her.
Okay, any comments or questions on personnel? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Okay. And at 10 minutes to 10, I will say agenda item number 14. I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming and participating. We really do appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.